All the ones over there?
All the ones over here and all the twos over there.
Position one is over there and position two is over here.
Okay.
I'm gonna take that one.
I think Councilman Brodell needs to take Wake with him to get his haircut, will he?
That's true. I'm gonna get a haircut next May 11th.
Do. Oh, you said do.
Let's see, we have a little, a few people in the audience, at least two. That aren't employees, et cetera. It's all good. We'll go ahead and get started. It is six thirty on the dot and Butch is gonna lead us in the information to play it and then we'll do our own.
Bow our head and gracious and we bow to the Lord. We're thankful again for the privilege and honor we have to gather together, represent citizens of this fine city. Thank you for the blessings that you've given us since the country and the liberties. We ask, Lord, that you watch over our safety officers, protect them as they, they work during these treacherous times. Lord, we ask you watch over business tonight, conduct it with the best goodwill of the city and according to your will. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
We can ask them?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
An accident, an accident, Rodeo?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dylan, please?
Present.
We have a panel here.
This meeting is called order. Do we have any public comments? Seeing nobody approaching the podium. I would assume that as they know and we'll move on to new business, which is the Midtown Settlement.
Good evening, council. I had emailed you all, still in agreement, kind of nuts and bolts explanation of that agreement this weekend. A couple of things I want to mention before you look at the ordinance that's in front of you tonight as it's part and parcel of the settlement agreement. We were sued by the Midtown Improvement District number eighty-four, the entity that bought all of the property that did the Midtown in bankruptcy. We were sued by them for, I'm gonna take this one off first. We were sued by them for a declaratory judgment to say that we took ownership of the streets that are within Midtown, without Midtown property. That was in two thousand seventeen, I believe, and then they filed for bankruptcy and it's been tied up in bankruptcy court for a while. Bankruptcy court released that late last year. It was sent back to the courts and essentially the lawsuit was with this, does the City of Bryan own those streets? Are they public streets and if so, it's our responsibility to repair and maintain those streets or to improve the district on those streets? And it's their responsibility to repair and maintain those streets. Now, a suit for a declaratory judgment doesn't have any advantages in any kind of hatch. It's just, it is what it is. A judge or a court will say, Bryan, you own it or Midtown, you own it. Now, I brought this to you several months ago and I set it in. It's a real, this is a really unique lawsuit because no matter who was going to win the case in court, I felt like we all would still continue to lose. The improvement district didn't have enough money to repair the streets. We didn't want to pay the money for repairing the streets. And so it was likely going to sit in the same state of this repair on a going forward basis. When I got out of law school, when the first cases I got on and we settled it through mediation similar to this, I had an older attorney tell me that the perfect settlement in every lawsuit is one where both parties walk away equally unhappy. And I thought, that's very true. And I believed it until last Friday. I, I have dubbed this a unicorn settlement improvement because I think both parties came to an agreement on something that is better than if they had won at trial, which is crazy to think about. This is, in my opinion, the ultimate win-win situation. Now, the settlement agreement, and I'll go through the details here in a second and take any questions about it. The mayor has the executive authority to approve and sign this, but I wanted to bring these details to your attention because some of these details will require you all to adopt ordinances in future, including the one that's in front of you tonight. So here are the details. The improvement district is going to give us a total of three hundred thousand dollars for the end of this year. We will deem those streets and that what's currently built out and I call that Midtown proper, we will deem those streets public. Now, we reviewed these numbers with Ted Taylor and with Mark Brennan and they felt very comfortable with that number. They gave us a blessing to go forward with that number. So they're gonna give us three hundred thousand dollars by the end of this year. And then they're, they're gonna dedicate two four acre tracts that we can use as a public park. I know our parks department is fairly strapped, their budget isn't perfect. We don't have to run out and build a public park on these tracts right now, but as you know, they're not making any more real estate. There is what there is and so we can sit on these four acres, these two four acre tracts or we can do something with them either. But we've got it if we want it. And to me, that's an amazing feature of this settlement. And it's one that I want to commend Truett Smith for really calling to attention and negotiating on behalf of the City of Bryan. He did an excellent job at our mediation last week. One of those four acres is going to be north of Hilltop and one of those four acres is gonna be south of Hilltop. And I'll get to those in more detail in a minute. So we will deem those streets public and we'll go ahead and repair and maintain those streets sometime in the next twelve months. After we receive the funding to do that. All of the lots in Midtown proper have been held up. They haven't been able to sell them because they've been locked up in litigation. And we would not, from a planning perspective, let them have permits to sell and develop those lots if the streets are in disrepair. Well, once we go ahead and agree to take ownership of the streets, we're gonna grant them permits on those lots. That helps them to generate revenue and to turn around and give to us so that we can repair the streets. They told us on Friday that they already pre-sold eight lots. I don't remember the number offhand in per square foot basis, but I remember thinking it was pretty high.
I would think it's right around a hundred and seventy-five per square foot.
Another forty-five, I guess. I was thinking it was somewhere in one forty, one fifty rooms per square foot on homes that they're gonna build up a lot. So they're gonna continue to build out what I consider premier residence.
It's one fifty.
It's one fifty. And.
Minimum.
This has nothing to do with us, but just to sort of answer some questions that they all have before we ask them. A lot of the things about Midtown make that, make that development so tough for developer coming in to make money off of are not, is not necessarily the overlay rules, but the building insurance that they have on those homes. And actually, between the residents that own those homes and developer, they're gonna go in and renegotiate those building assurances so that they're, they're a little more economical for them, but that has nothing to do with the city. Part of that settlement, and this is where U of City Council comes in, is that we're gonna adopt this ordinance tonight that amends the, the borders of the overlay district, okay? If you're familiar with the overlay district, it, it actually goes with what's developed now and then covers what I call phase two of Midtown, which is the raw land that's north of Midtown and south of Hilltop Road. And it's about fifty-five acres, fifty acres, I'll put it on the spot, somewhere around fifty, fifty-five acres. And then north of Hilltop Road, there's another nine, no, it's all about portion, I think that's more like it.
Another fifty, because originally it was ninety.
And that, and that's what I call phase three, that's north of Hilltop Road. Ultimately, if you go back and look at the drawing, what Midtown was sold as, it was gonna be developed a bit stretched from where it is now to fifty acres north of Hilltop Road. So part of that is you all will look and hopefully will adopt this ordinance that will shrink that overlay district to what is developed now plus about three to five acres on the backside. So that what they can do is then go and finish developing Midtown proper. And then in the future, we will bring ordinances to you that will rezone what I call phase two, which is that area north of Midtown proper and south of Hilltop and then phase three, which is north of Hilltop. Phase two, ten acres of that will be zoned as R one with a plan for it to become a P U D. I'll do some more details on that in a second. Fifteen acres of that will be zoned R one S and then the remainder of it will be zoned R two, which is our largest single family homes here in Bryan. And we can't, we don't have as much as ready yet because I mean, your blessing go forward and they need to do their planning and engineering and development to figure out which acres go where. And the planning on it is just kind of theory is that Midtown is supposed to be a high density neighborhood and it's gonna continue to be high density and fade into low density further down the road. So this ten acres that's R one, that permits duplexes, does not permit apartments. There will not be any apartments over there. We have warnings that prevent that. But R one permit, allows for duplexes and if they have a P U D, they can develop and misplace or plan one to develop nice townhomes that have shared walls in combinations of three or four. And that would not be permitted under R one and they would have to go through the planning process of planning and zoning commission to get that developed as a P U D. For an example, one of our P U Ds that has residents like that is Prospect Park. We have those townhomes that are located right in the middle that all share a wall. So there will be ten acres of that and it's likely that the four acres that we will get will be close to that ten acres. So we'll have a high density area that's right there near the park. That's the general. And then somewhere above that will be R one S, which are smaller single residence family homes. They're thinking more patio homes. The, the phrase they used for us was that they were targeting millennials and people that are looking to downsize. Starter homes, if you will. And then the remainder of it, so you've got twenty-five, the remainder twenty-five-ish acres in phase two will be R two. We started with our largest lot, largest single family home in the middle of Hilltop, but that'll be R two as well. And we would be bringing you all those ordinances whenever the time is right. The last detail is that there is a planned collector road on the master street plan. It goes right through that phase two and north of Hilltop Road. Now, a collector road, if you're not familiar, is two two lane roads, it's a two lane road. It's a two lane road with a median in the middle and a bike trail beside it. We're gonna agree to downsize that collector road to a local road and we'll do the five ordinance whenever it comes because we'll need to figure out where it's gonna be located. And it's gonna be a local road with a bike lane beside it so that you can still have a bike trail that runs all the way to the public.
Bike lane, not bike.
Bike lane. Gonna be a bike lane. And then they're also gonna grant us twenty additional feet of rideaway on that local road so that if, if the velvet becomes so dense in the future and we feel like it's necessary and we can budget for it and pay for it to build a collector road, if we feel like we absolutely have it. And. Are there any questions out there?
So basically, the whole premise of Midtown originally, that's, that's tossed with this ordinance?
No. The, the original premise will stay the same in the, in the original Midtown. The look and everything else will remain that way in that area because that'll continue to be an overlay district. They've just shrunk that area down.
Right, okay. I didn't, I didn't word my phrase correctly, but so basically the area that's currently Midtown.
Correct.
Will, will remain with the, the certain type of housing and all that stuff. And then as it fades out.
Yeah, it'll transition.
It'll transition to more traditional neighborhood.
Correct.
With the urban planning, you've got the density and then it goes lesser and lesser and lesser as you go farther back. If I remember right, okay.
So it follows the same overall claimings on a Midtown originally? But it's not gonna have the same architectural design?
Right. And, oh, I'm sorry. We're allowed to do this to this overlay district where if we weren't allowed to make any changes to the hard drive because this was originally privately owned?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. And another, I'll, I'll be serious, a lot of those lots are owned by the improvement district. When the improvement district bought those, those became tax exempt because of the steps it's turned around. It's gonna cycle back to the improvement district. Once they're sold, that tax exempt status is removed and attached. I know that's something that councilmen will remember that about certain times in the past.
So with the, with the second addition on the backside of Midtown proper, that's gonna be a, a single lane or a road going from Hilltop all the way to Highway five, correct? That's gonna go through the neighborhood.
It's gonna go down and then it'll join in the Commonwealth.
Yeah, because I, I had a resident reach out today and that was a major concern for that neighborhood was that now you're gonna have more traffic that's gonna be coming through what people bought into Bryan as living in a neighborhood. And there's kids that play, I know we've had issues in the past of having a stop sign be put in, previous one. And so I know there's concern in, in that Commonwealth area about the, the influx of traffic that would be coming with this other. Could we, and I know this is probably for another meeting, but just so we'll have it on the record, could we look at some way to potentially slow down tra, traffic once we add more with all the housing that's being moved in?
I'm sure that could be looked at. I mean, that section of road that they're talking about is also on the master street plan.
Yeah.
So if it were to be removed from that plan, that, you know, that takes a active yawn as well, so.
I just, it was a question that was brought up by a resident today.
And I think that'll go through the whole review process when they put out the plan and stuff like that, that'll, that'll come out.
But that street, two, all the way to Hilltop has been in the plan all along.
Yes.
So it's nothing changed.
It's nothing new. Nothing new.
And it's been there for ten, ten years?
As long as the master street plan's been there.
Ten years, maybe fifteen years.
There could possibly be a quicker way out for some of those folks than coming through Commonwealth and up into the light and all, through all the trouble.
Good thing.
Yeah, once we finish all the stuff on Hilltop and Barkley and all, that's, that's gonna provide a lot of.
It'll change the traffic pattern.
Egress out that way.
And right now, it runs, that residence north and south. And we talked this year and they said, hey, that's nothing with state of the week. Can we make it, you know, relocate on the property, make it curb through or something? And I don't think that will be a problem, but yes, that road will connect from five to Commonwealth to Hilltop.
You had mentioned about one of the parks that's gonna have a pond on it and mentioned something about a walking path. Is that something the city's gonna have to provide or are they, are they gonna provide the walking path in that pond?
They said that they would build that as part of their design. They'll have a, and I really can't speak in that term, I said, Truett, jump in here correctly if I say something wrong. There's a pond already on the north side, what I call phase three back there. They're gonna need that for water retention anyway. So that would be included in part of the four acres you get up there and they're planning on us to build a walking trail around or a walking path around it. And we could use it as a fishing pond park or some sort of combination. But that pond would stay there and it serves a dual purpose. It's nice to look at, it's functional because it serves for water retention purposes and then we can use it as a pond.
Do we typically own the retention basin? We don't.
No, but this is, it's monitoring, this is quite a bit larger than just a typical neighborhood retention basin.
And I think also to speak, and I'm not trying to jump in the engineering part of it because I'll get out of my depths really quickly, but I know for a fact that we try not to, any of the, I think it's a detention pond where you have the water stored and then goes away.
Right.
I think this is a little bit more of a, a need situation because it's retention. So, you know, it's always gonna have water in it. It seems somewhat of a humidity much life like Charles or Lake Norma and Bishop Farm. They have capability of storing more water while also being an amenity to the community.
Okay, so they'll still be responsible for detention and water runoff?
Yeah, I think as, as developing entry, they, they, we have to figure out what's happening there. There'd still be a responsibility of making sure that they need all our stormwater specifications.
Because you don't want all the, actually build houses, you don't want stormwater running into the pond.
Yeah, I think whatever there would have to be a control system of some nature so that they know if there is water going in the pond, how much that would be and how it would hurt.
And the maintenance around it too. We'd make sure who's clear on maintaining that because we've had some issues in the last few years of different places with it.
Be responsible for the maintenance of, of those.
We could be getting the pond before the pores here, but we gotta pass the ordinance further.
Well, I have a couple of questions, Josh, I want to ask you that you brought to the house tonight. Do we have an estimate on what the cost is to repair the streets to bring them up to the.
Yeah, that's a, that's a literally million dollar question. We can do it for three hundred thousand dollars. It really depends on what you want to do, what type of, and how much you want to repair them. There's a lot of really boring spreadsheets that we can show you and we've done some geotechnical surveys and stuff that I practically don't understand and it's, but, but going forward, we can do what we want to do for three hundred. It's not gonna be perfect. Money needs, you know, some, you get what you said, foreign things, but we do feel comfortable that that's enough money to repair those.
Yeah, it's a state, it's a subsurface stabilization method that they're not using for that.
There are all sorts of other methods we could do that not we do. Scraping the whole thing. We can lose a lot of curb and butter and that gets more expensive. But Ted Taylor's looked at this every different way and, you know, if we all had unlimited money, we could make every, you know.
Right. The main thing is three hundred thousand or seven or eight hundred, you can get the roads back in check, okay? Two other questions I have is, does this release all of the other liens that we had for like code enforcement violations for maintenance of lots and things or?
I wouldn't think so.
Or is, or there still be?
Those are separate liens and.
So that when they sell those lots, they'll still have to be separate with the city?
This strictly makes the lawsuit go away and it steps in motion to renegotiate.
Okay. And then, and this may be in the details too, but I just wanted to know since we talked about those two four acre tracts for the parks, will that be written into the city so like we can't sell those? Like, I mean, is there, is there any kind of provision to say, hey, or is just, we're just gonna say they're parks used and in twenty years from now, the city wants to do something different?
I mean, it's essentially through real estate.
That's what I'm asking, so it's not.
It's just City of Bryan, it's not City of Bryan Parks.
They, they basically said that deed the, the four acres to us.
I mean, our, our initial, just thought in the conversation was, hey, this would be great for parks. We don't have any parks. Well, we have Benlin Road, soccer fields and we have.
Scrapyard, yeah.
And those are the only parks we have on the north side of town.
No, I think it's great. I just, that's why I was asking if it was restricted to.
No, there's no restriction on it.
It'd be some great green fields for kids in those neighborhoods.
That's one thing I would like maybe think about and maybe put some restrictions on there so that it always remains some type of park.
And once we go through that process of deeding and stuff, that can absolutely be done if y'all desire.
Motion, we suspend the rules, put on first, second, third reading by title only?
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read first, second, third reading by title only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. An ordinance amending ordinance twenty eleven dash three for the purpose of reducing the Midtown overlay district.
Motion to adopt?
Have a motion and a second to adopt, roll call vote please.
Dylan, please?
Yes.
One, accident, incident, Paul?
Yes.
Ethan, welcome?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Any emergency clause, sir?
There is an emergency clause on this.
Motion to adopt emergency clause?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt a motion emergency clause. Roll call vote please.
Dylan, please?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Ethan, welcome?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Justin and Glad, in a vote absent. Motion passes with emergency clause that is on its twenty twenty dash seventeen. Thank you, Josh. Thank you. Next up, the ever popular and always present Chief Minden and Chief Jordan to talk about the A-Wind Tower and radio association.
Dean and Councilman, do you think that we could do this last night?
Yeah, we're in your house. In his house.
We share a house.
It's our, our living room.
Cohabitate house.
Cohabitate, we can't have a. So, do you want me to bring this or do you want me to take it off?
Oh, you can take it off.
So to give you a little bit of background on what we're asking for, so if, and we have Steven Gray House, he's with Motorola. It's your answer question, you can actually fill in a little bit more information. So basically, our radio coverage for our portals and our in cars for police, fire, code enforcement and amateur, we're all on the same system, call A-Wind, the statewide system. We are not at an accessible level. We have what's called RSSI, which is your receiving signal propagator. We did testing on that last year and there. We did testing on that last year and there are, I almost said a vast majority now, but a lot of the city is single digit RSSI. So to understand that, zero is horrible, so we're getting eight, nine. We're basically horrible. You wanna get, you can get triple digits and have great reception, which when we put in a, uh, Steven, precious enough to get a, what's called a sow, correct? This is a portal tower and we put a few places around town, if I've seen it, we had it down at Station Two, uh, for a little while, which actually allowed us. Now the junior high has put an amplifier, it allows the, the officers and the firefighters and the people in there to call. But prior to that, if you went into junior high, you've got zero reception inbound or outbound. We put that sow, the portal tower out there, it allowed a radio call instantaneously. We put it over on Bitterman Road, gave it reception instantaneously. So these are, and that's how tall is that?
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet, so that's not very tall, but that gave us great reception. So we gave it a pretty good indicator that we need a tower, uh, which is what we're lacking. Went around, did a, some exploration with, with Motorola, looked for tower locations, different options. Uh, we looked at, uh, the two water towers that they have in town. There's a lot of them, it's a perfect, it's tall structures, they're in good places, but it is actually, it's more expensive to put something in a water tower than to either build a power or put it on a bridge and power. So the water tower went out of the way real quick. It was a great idea, but there's a lot of infrastructure inside the water tower that you really don't wanna mess with as far as with the, the radio equipment. So it really wasn't a good option. The tower that we're proposing was located, uh, just outside of city limits, actually in Foxside. The city of Foxside has gone ahead and procured it from, I think it's, I think it was Verizon Tower? That they had abandoned, so the tower is still there, it's still structurally intact, doesn't have any components or anything on it, so it's a very good option. It's just under, I believe, two hundred feet tall, so it's gonna provide a, a wide service range for the city. But Foxside, actually, obviously, they're gonna, that's gonna be their contribution to this, to this plan if they have the tower. Really, we'll be paying for the part to basically put the gas in. It'll be a small building, side generator, things of that nature, that'll go within there. It's a great fit to the location and to build a two hundred foot tower is gonna cost us, you know, quarter million, half million, wire. Steven's got some coverage maps that we'll put up here, we have some to pass out to you, kinda show you what we're looking at right now. And then what we're looking at when we build this tower, because we're gonna have to go there. I was talking to, to RJ yesterday, someone's aisle one center, and, and you have the tower gonna fit in aisle one center. I said, well, it'd be nice because people in our aisle one center can actually hear us when we're transping. Hops in the park when we're out there, our portals, we can't transmit. We literally, we're going on cell phones. There's a few places in the park we might, we possibly get out, but like we're just having road rage and traffic, we can't get out. You literally hear everybody use the signal. They're doing, you, kids are miking here, we're testing here. All you get is a food, you're not even gonna get out. So that provides that. The important thing about it is, is we have to build a tower. The good part about it is, is once we build the tower, we're done with it. It gets turned over to the state AWIN system and the maintenance and perpetuity after that is up to you. So if you have to upgrade to the equipment, repair to the equipment, it's not on us. All we have to do is build the tower and it's turned over to the state. This will be the first true AWIN power in Lake County, if there is a non-Lake County. It's one of the reasons why we have, we're the center of the state of Arkansas, we have. We're mounting off Magna Cove and shit all out. Not that close to it, but.
No.
The second part of that is included in this, uh, proposal is for the radios. Our current radios, uh, everybody in the city of Brown are utilizing, are absolutely, uh, the first made in the mid, early two thousand. Steven first built them in two thousand nine. They no longer make that radio, they no longer make parts for that radio. So I know JB just sent three off the other day. He might be lucky to use one of them, basically send it off to the, our vendor that does it. If they can find scrap parts, put your radio back together, that's, that's where we're at on our radios right now. And if they go out, we're to the point now where we have to begin to purchase these radios because we can't fix them. And by making the purchase on the radios, you're looking at, you know, it'll be ten, fifteen years before we ever purchase radios again. So we'll be pretty well set on that. All our insurance is not gonna be here.
And one of the, one of the neat features I think about the radios is they have a GPS capability, if I'm correct. Where if something happens and the officer can't key his mic or something, he can still be located via that.
They do that, that also has a lot of loot to it, because our current radios with the technology that was in there, so, two thousand nine and below, it just wasn't there. They, they serve the purpose that we're good radios, uh, these, this is the model, wherever we're at as far as. We're gonna have to replace them at some point in time, if they, if they break, we're pretty much done with them.
So Chief, will, will the other first responders be able to use the AWIN tower also?
They will, that, there's a second thing, uh, we're paying for it, everybody can.
Oh, I understand. But, but, but my guys, we, that's, that's what we use in emergencies too.
It's gonna benefit the highway department, it's gonna benefit, uh, first electric, it's gonna benefit anybody that's on the, the AWIN, AWN system. It's gonna benefit the state police, highway police. It's gonna, when you see these coverage maps, it's gonna shock you, hospitalier. And you're gonna see how spotty our coverage actually is. And then when you see what we're gonna get with the tower, it'll be very. This is our inbound, so our portable, which is the one we carry with us when we're out of our car, this is our inbound coverage. So the drain, if the city can crack from, that's a ninety-five percent or better chance that we're gonna get out, or we're gonna, we're gonna get the signal. Anything that's in white, it's not saying you're not gonna get out, it's just do no good for the sense of it. Drain, you're pretty much guaranteed to get out. So put the tower up and this is what you get. Half of this is a period of time.
Yeah, we've done tests for my home unit and it's spotty in Richardson Place.
It's tall.
Yeah, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
All that apartment complex, we don't know if we can get out.
All very near.
All the liens we brought.
You guys never get called over there though, do you?
No, they never call. But no, you go in the apartments, we had a missing kid probably what, two months ago? I mean, we're not even in the apartments, we're just wandering around the apartments and literally we can't call each other. And a police and fire out there, we're basically on our cell phones. Kind of very.
Uh, it's dangerous too. If cell service goes down, you're in trouble. I didn't say the bad word.
No, and also it's built into our radios, it's also built into, into our radios. It's, the firefighters that we have, it's even codes, you know, it's your emergency button. And it's working on the same system that, you know, if you're, you're helping but, so if that's not where you can get out, then you're not getting help.
So the state AWIN program's not willing to help with this at all?
No. Okay, and if, if we're not the only accident, if you look at Northwest Arkansas, you've got Washington County, Benton County, all doing the same thing on a county law basis, city of Fayetteville. That's what they're adding, upgrading the radios. Some of them are even on the AWN system, they're having the same, they build a tower, they take it over and.
I think Judge Gary's leaving, looking at two or three towers and so.
So I know that, I know that AWIN does provide, like during an emergency, they'll, they'll provide gas to the generators at the towers. Does, now, this is gonna be our tower?
No, once we build the tower, if it's operational, it can take them.
Okay, so they have to maintain it, they have to, in an emergency, have to make sure it's built up?
The only thing that'll have to be maintained out there most likely, in Foxside, are you agree to do that? It's like mow around the fence and things like that, for the.
Roundups.
Operation of the job, so they'd say, we're done with it. You won't see another dial on the tower, it's taller than.
I got some stuff that'll fix that ground.
Why's that not for the.
This, uh, this money was not originally budgeted for, correct? Or was it?
No, it's to the capital group.
George, what, what, where will the money come from for, for this project to take flight?
Might wanna step up here for a minute.
That's one of the things we're looking at with this, is to allow us to look at a couple of different options on getting that.
Yes, that's what, that's what I was gonna say is that, um, the way that we worded it to bring you guys tonight is still allow them to work through the contract that half pays for it. We've got an option to put it out to the minimum seventy-eight in the next couple of days with the local banks and see what rates we get back. But also on the table is a finance and option for Motorola to sell. Um, and it may work out that that's a better option because they are not requiring us to make a first payment till September of twenty twenty-one.
Oh, wow.
And if we do that, um, I think it would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand in twenty twenty-one. And so that may be tough to beat even if we get an overall better rate on, and, you know, interest rate. So we've got, you know, just run the map on those and look at both of those options and see if the local banks are interested. And if they are, you know, what they could suggest to. And, um, in terms of the budget, you know, this is like anything else. And we gotta know we're getting ran towards the budget season, so I feel that this is doable, but I am concerned because it's really not a capital item, because we're not gonna own anything. So we will still need to balance and that's gonna be difficult, um, but, you know, I think it is doable, we might just have to cut some other things, you know, how that works.
I have faith in George.
So, well, it's gonna, it'll be a team effort because, you know, I mean, so, uh, that's just something we have to consider and probably figure out.
George, out of the, out of the, is it two million dollars? Out of two million dollars, how much of that is the radios? Just a rough estimate.
Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Well, that's a capital item, isn't it?
Well, I, I, the capital, that piece might be, the tower will be the one owner.
Radio, our.
So one point two million would be non-capital, but.
Yeah, we may be able to split it up in.
I, I was just trying to.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, definitely, that's definitely something we can consider. So, and that's the kind of, you know, we're gonna have to look at it all different ways. Like I said, I think it's doable, I just, and it won't be easy, but I think we can do it. And, um, we've got several different options on the way here. So, uh, you'll probably see if, you know, what I need to know from you guys tonight past the end of the night is, do you want me to go ahead and get it out tomorrow to the local bank? Because we don't have time, if we want the Motorola deal, to, uh, give them the full two weeks to respond. We need them to respond by the twenty-first in the morning. And that doesn't give the banks a lot of time, so they may not be interested, but my thought on it is, go ahead and give them the option. And if, if they can come up with something, you know, the local.
If there's a better deal, we'll go that route, if it's not, we'll go the other route if y'all approve for this one night.
So what would the term be with Motorola, how long is that?
It's, I looked at doing it on a monthly payment starting September twenty twenty-one at, uh, two point oh, I think it's oh-three.
It's a five year?
Then a five year, yeah. And the minimum seventy-eight, I think it's gonna do the same thing because we can go out five years on residence seventy-eight. So I was, and it's, it's essentially a seven, minimum seventy-eight option, that Motorola's providing, so, um.
It's just not having to make that payment till September of twenty twenty-one is the key element that we might need.
And we can actually budget that, do it all next year, start that kind of. I look at it as paying that man, so.
So if we do this, how quickly does this occur?
It's a steam, Greg. The steam can probably explain, you know, for even while we're, or, you know, if one of the things is COVID, it's actually probably good for us right now, because.
Really?
We can get some.
I was wondering about that.
We can offer us some incentives if, if the economy and our people were, were really great. We might not have got this, but we're getting, you know, a hundred thousand plus incentives to do this project because of COVID. But I'm.
So the radios will be, um, shipped by the end of the year. And so to actually, uh, add the equipment at the Pine Haven site, probably looking at about ten to twelve months. Now, originally I thought it was gonna be sooner, but obviously there's a shortage on generators, equipment. So just to be safe, I would say ten, twelve months to get that equipment installed and operational.
But what they'll have with their radios whether, but by January one?
We will have the radios, yes, if you have those shipped by the end of the year, absolutely.
Just won't have full use of them.
Well, so we, the radios can be programmed to be, uh, placed on AWIN now. The coverage is what it is, so, uh, the coverage is not gonna get better until we get this one tower up and running. But no, we can absolutely get the radios programmed, installed in all the vehicles, um, you know, in a short manner, but you'll have those ready to be, uh, used by the end of the year.
Steve, if you, if you install them on the AWIN system, is that part of already, already what you?
Yes, all the, um, installation for vehicles, the apparatuses, um, programming, that is all inclusive. And we use Arkansas Valley Communications for the install and programming outlet on local rock. And they currently maintain a lot of your equipment out.
So the old radios aren't worth anything?
I did you trade in discount on those radios?
I'm just asking.
That's, no, this is a good answer, but I did reflect that in your process, yes.
Just ask.
Yes, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Parts, parts, that's what that is.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. One is, um, I know RJ has asked if it had been budgeted for this year and it was not. But from what I understand, we've known about the lack of coverage for a while, is there a reason why we haven't budgeted for this? Like I know, I'm just gonna use this for example, like we have some software that the plate told her in her budget for the last few years.
Well, honestly, up until Chief Minden got on, came on, I was not aware of this at all.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of this at all either.
And he started, he started investigating and talked to his people and that's when they started doing.
Well, we're the only one that'll say that had this problem. You all know I worked at Plasque County before Plasque County had the issue, but just in like the southern parts of county around the five, third, fourth door. So I was already working with Steven over there, so I knew him. And we were looking at building a tower, you know, down around Wright School, the Red Hill area, in that area to get more reception for us, just in that one geo area. I came here, honestly, I would've thought that being in the state, you would have very decent reception. It just took me long to get here to hear that, and I was like, okay. And actually, Mike, when you had your surgery. So, Mike went on my duty, while he's on my duty, I made him our radio, uh.
Radio network.
I made this your project, while you're on my duty, work the gray house, go around, give us some numbers, give us some feedback on how, what the problem is, where it's at. They literally know, there hasn't been any type of, they didn't say it, they knew. We knew that the problem, it's no, it's still a problem. So there's never been an actual field study done, you know, placing the sow out, going around measuring the RSSI. We don't have to take it over to that Motorola, uh, we went around taking all these RSSIs, realizing, hey, this is. So it's, it's probably not easy fix, a lot of guys, they would just need new radios. Now, we use the new, you know, text radios, samples broken personally. It doesn't matter if you use brand radio, there's no reception. I mean, it just kinda came to fruition. And I, that's why there was budget, we were working on it for a year. And getting the numbers, getting everything together, the tower thing just came into, into play, what, last few months?
Probably two, three months.
Whatever they required the tower. I mean, everything just kinda falling into place, this is where it's at, and, and incentives came forward too.
But there's not any other, like grants or?
Well, actually, I've actually reached out to Senator Bozeman's office and Representative Bill's office to see if they can help us find some grants for this. So even as we're pursuing this and we're working with this contract, we're looking for grant money for that.
And we've been looking, they haven't found one, we're looking at, yeah. And it's the same problem, I mean, I don't know that, I don't know if they're reading what they're doing in Northwest Arkansas. I don't know that they got any grant money to do it.
And with the interstate running right through our city, it's going to help the state police also, and they'll be able, I mean, so.
Well, as part of this discussion, we actually met with Foxside, Benton, and Plasque County, all three. And, uh, what?
Sweene.
I'm sorry, Sweene County, yeah, sorry. Uh, we met with all of those entities and discussed this as a possible sharing option. Uh, Benton opted out because they felt they had adequate coverage. Uh, Sweene County, Judge hasn't gotten quite back to me yet on that, because he's got some other things he's looking at. I know he's looking at another tower on the south side of the county, and I know he's got some coverage issues on the north side of the county as well. So he told me he didn't like the help, but he really has no clue exactly how much he can. And of course, Foxside was kind enough to acquire the tower as, as their P S on this project.
Benton is fortunate that, that they have a, a small RSS tower on, on how they're, on how it all is first marketed, it happens to be inside them. It's not a true AWIN tower, so it doesn't need necessarily be covered. Plus, they're, they're closer to Magna Cove and they're closer to.
What's the one in the drove here? Uh, is that not?
Yeah, that's a, they're closer, we're, we're just not close to the tower.
They probably thought if we really needed it, we'd pay for it and they'd use it if they wanted to anyways.
Oh, okay, everybody. But, I mean, the grand scheme of things, if you look at the map, where do you get the old one, but, but, right now, we're, I'm saying.
Yeah, both, both contracts, we have the option of. Both contracts, we have the option, if you do give grants to them in the entire five years of the period, if you can apply it, if you have a name on the monthly, it'll win first.
That multiple usage raises a question, because I'm not familiar with AWIN capacity as much as I am cell capacity. Is there, is there an issue, like, I mean, is there a limit to the amount of capacity that could go through an AWIN tower? You know what I'm saying?
I do, that's a good question. So the current system, currently AWIN has roughly about a hundred and twenty-five towers across the state. It is an open-throated safety system. Currently, the design is what we call Phase One FDMA, which is occupies one single channel. Well, the state is now upgrading all the towers across the state and they're rotating from Phase One to Phase Two. So what that means from a user is if there's some kind of catastrophic event that happens here locally, and you have state police, game and fish, you have Plaski County. So everybody comes to the one site, the capacity is there to handle all that traffic. And that's the site we're putting in at Pine Haven will be Phase Two TDMA.
And then, as far as the radios go, I mean, is there a reason, like, say tonight, that we need to approve both? Or, I mean, I know it's rolled into one proposal, but if we're not gonna have a tower for ten to twelve months.
By doing them both, we get incentives for both, you know, discounts for the radio and discounts for the tower. He was kind enough to roll the discount for both of those, but he went like this. And, you know, we need, go ahead.
I'm sure the radios are lasting long, that's another thing, if he sent three off, then he may get one of those three. And what they're doing now is he sent them three, and they take part two to make you one. So we can, you know, we can say, yeah, but that one, so that'll go, I don't need the radio.
And they have to all be the same, correct?
They don't necessarily have to all be the same, but if, all these radios are also Phase One, so once that Phase Two starts happening, those radios don't communicate the same way on it, because they're all programmed as Phase One radios, and that's another thing. Any Phase One radios, they're not allowing two Phase One radios on the system, so they're maybe no doubt.
And your radios, like your cell phone, basically they're fifteen years old almost?
Oh, yeah.
So that's why they're outdated.
But it's like two Gs, we need to. But as far as like all the radios being the same, if you, if you look at the specs on radios, JP's radio is different than what we're carrying. He's getting fire rated radios, something called Road Lights.
But it's just, it's higher temperature rating. And if all our radios are, we have six different kinds, and I've got a crew working on one station one day, another station the other day. They're not seeing those radios, they're feeling them and they know what knobs are where, because they know where to go, they know what buttons to push.
Hey, y'all already share a house.
We've got different radios.
Easy.
We've got different radios too, we've got different batteries, different chargers.
Yeah, it's getting not as simple as having four, five different kinds.
Yeah, I know, that wouldn't be the ideal. Right.
In the proposal, so you have the specific radios there for the hard parts, they do things where they do. The ones PD has, a little different one, COVID four, the hours that they're gonna have, because they're not going through the rigors that we're gonna put through. So it's a less expensive base radio, still a very good quality radio. Because what they're getting right now is the same rate, but they're potentially getting a hand down, what they did. So if you get them a radio, it's gonna work very well. They don't need a fire rated radio, or one like we're gonna have, where we touch them on ground somebody.
It's the Apex six thousand. And so I've got two models with me, I brought them, if you guys wanted to see them, I don't know how interested you are. But they're impact green, the fire radio is fifty X C, which is a premium edition, high temperature rating, big gloves. And then law enforcement grade is Apex six thousand, is the standard law enforcement grade rating.
How many like the one for?
Oh, Apex nine hundred, it's a senior advanced, smaller radio, it's got two knobs, so it gets perfect for you.
Any other questions?
With the, for the tower work that has to be done and also the radios, do we have to get, I mean, are we okay to just use this proposal? Or do we have to get the multiple bids?
They're the only provider.
Okay.
So.
So on the radios, the first thing we always use for state and local government is we price off the state contract, which is the NASPL arising. That gives you guys the opportunity to purchase the radio. As far as the tower, I mean, it's a Motorola tower with Motorola equipment. But as far as the NASPL rising goes, we did load those for the radios.
While you're up there, working?
So the radios often standard with a one-year warranty. The great thing about, and I think I actually put three years of service in the pricing, in as far as, you know, referring to the radios or also.
Just the radio?
Yes, it's a one-year standard warranty.
Okay.
Do y'all have any questions about the coverage map?
It's pretty green.
It is a lot better.
A lot better.
The tower ready by the end of next year?
I would say to be saved ten to twelve months, it could be sooner. It obviously depends on what's available in terms of equipment that we can get our hands on, because right now, like I said, generators are kind of hard to come by. So, but I would say probably ten to twelve months to save.
I'm sure, I'm sure Chief Mendon will be after him about every week or every other week.
Come to Lowe's, I'll get you a generator.
Make a good deal.
But mainly, this is a safety issue for fire, police, and our public safety. City of Bryant, and it expands out.
Everything we do is based around communication, all of our protocols, all of our activities are based on communication. And when you look at the difference between that map, saying, hey, that's where we can communicate well, and the other map saying, maybe. You know what I mean? Safety is a big deal to us, with our people. And not being able to talk to you, I mean, maybe to answer the question about if we do the one and not the others. I mean, if we do the radios and not the tower, that doesn't solve anything, because it's based on the infrastructure. You could have the best if, but if it doesn't communicate out, that's a problem with that. If you do the tower and not the radios, not the equipment, we don't know how much longer we can live on it, what we've got, as Chief Mendon said. The only way we could possibly take a chance to get one repaired is if someone had those parts stockpiled on their shelf, but not make them anymore. We're getting to the point now where, yes, why haven't we heard about this? Or, we try to, you know, try to keep going and keep going, but now we're at a point where the radios are on the streets. And the addition of the tower part into the deal in the last couple of months really made this come to a point where now it's about time to step through it.
And I appreciate that, I guess my hesitation right now is the budget for twenty twenty-one, not knowing what's gonna have to be cut. I'm gonna be a part of that process, but I won't have to be here in twenty twenty-one to make those adjustments that are gonna be needed. But I'm still thinking, you know, I'm concerned that there may be some things cut from different departments that we've been talking about doing for a number of years. And I, and I hope you all know that I'm definitely a big supporter, pro first responders, but I think that's where, what I'm concerned about is not, no, we're going into this. I don't wanna say rushed, but.
Well, with the answer to that, I agree with you, there is some unknown with that, but even with the equipment that we have, there's unknown as well. And we don't know, who knows, who knows next year, all of them, all of them might break and then where are we? So we just don't know. I mean, there's gonna be some uncertainty, I understand that, and I think y'all know me well enough, and I'm gonna do the best I can for the city to control spending where we need to. And if it's a critical item that I think we need, is, you know, we'll go that route. But I won't be cutting things will as nearly just to do, just to make the budget. It'll be reasoned cuts if we have to do something like that.
And I, and I have faced with Joy too, I don't, I don't mean, when I said that, I don't mean that we don't do a good job, our financial department don't do a good job. I just, I know that we've talked about several things, and there's upcoming issues we're gonna be discussing in the next month or two also that we gotta consider when we start talking about spending this kind of money.
And I understand that.
And then we're talking.
But also with public safety.
I agree, that's why I said I'm very pro first responders.
I mean, as a council, we're truly responsible for basically three things. Overall, public safety, making sure the streets are adequate, make sure water supply is adequate, when it comes down to it, in Bryant. And the parks are nice too. But, Treat, I got that in for you, make sure you remember that. But, but public safety is number one. If you show this map to citizens in our highest growth area north of town, and tell them there was no coverage, that would be worse than a bad intersection on Highway Five.
I agree.
Which we talked about. We agree, we know it's a huge act, and for a lot of money, and it is somewhat of a gamble. But we got men and women out there running the fires and rushing into buildings, making traffic stops. And I think we owe it to the families they have to make sure they at least talk to the radio.
I mean, last September, last December, could have, is a classic example of that, it could have turned out a lot differently if, if they wouldn't have been able to get a radio in there and, you know, have radio contact like they will today.
Well, and honestly, when we had this duty, we did have great communication there to the department population. When you go back and listen to the recordings, they're spotty, they're sporadic. So I've got an officer laying on the ground.
What we need to do now is.
Our department's people couldn't talk back to this, that. All right.
How many, how many of you guys, it's like on this, I don't know the specifics, but you mentioned water. Is there a reason why public works did not, maybe said, do they want to be involved or?
I asked them, and they originally, originally said so, but then they said their radios, they felt that their radios were coming for now, so that's, that's exactly why.
Is it anything that they would potentially have interested in the tower later?
They could get an AWIN radio that'd be connected in.
How about they're in this proposal? Proposal that was.
They actually stepped out, and we, they were supposed to be, but we just actually, out of control and stuff isn't there, so.
Okay, I was gonna say, I thought it said public works.
They did, they actually switched over to Station Two, Station Three.
Right. Because public works, in the middle of this talk with Mr. Gray House, they stepped, they, public works decided they didn't wanna, they didn't need new radios at this time. So, okay, I'm gonna buy my own with your own money.
It's itchy, I've had on for twelve hours.
So if, so basically tonight, I, you know, if y'all are, we're ready to roll with this. It's what it is, it's an approval to move forward with contract negotiations with Motorola Solutions to improve emergency first responder broadcast capacity or capability within the City of Bryant. And what this does is allows me to, and Joy actually, to put this out and see what the best deal we can get for this proposal.
I make a motion that we move forward contract negotiations with Motorola Solutions to improve the emergency first responder broadcast capability for the City of Bryant.
Sick.
Hey, you do that for me.
Last time I did this, he got on to it.
I have a motion in a second to move forward the contract negotiation with Motorola Solutions to improve first responder broadcast capabilities within the city. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. The City, the City of Bryant thanks you and the citizens of Bryant, well, thank you for this. Once they discover it. Moving on to our final, mayor comments, I got nothing tonight, folks. Last night, we got it tonight, I will say Bryant one-on-one is Thursday night for people who are so inclined to enjoy three nights of fun.
Go Hornets, beat Frampton Sun.
That's right, I will be there, so I'm looking forward to that. Any council comments?
Will you keep us updated on what the rates coming out?
Absolutely, yes, as soon as, as soon as me and Joy get that information, we will send that out to council.
And we should have a council meeting toward the end of.
Right, we'll have to have this decision by the twenty-first.
We've had so many, I can't.
We'll have to have this decision by the twenty-first, but, but as soon as me and Joy find that out, we will get that out to you to make you aware of.
Or you can do it in a separate meeting, though.
I don't even wanna do that, I don't mind either way.
You know, the county could come across with some money next year, if you think about this tower, it could do it.
I've been.
Now, the county could do that.
I've been told that a couple of times.
I know a guy.
I know two guys.
Yeah.
So with all that, if there's no council comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.